Should try to lobby for opportunities exchange outside mainland. So I speak, President. Mister Iverson Chang. President, I'm checked to the amendment to propose the slashing the budget of the Joint Offices for the investigation of water sewage complaints. We have so many old buildings in Hong Kong and since the formation of the Joint Office, there have been a huge demand. So this is the Joint Office by the Buildings Department and the AVHD. So even though we have heard from time to time from the Audit Commission have investigating this Joint Office and criticizing of the long processing time, however, I object to this amendment. This is one of the few options for the public available in dealing with water sewage complaints. Otherwise, the public will have to resort to the private credit firm and the results will not actually be recognized or accepted. And after engaging the private sector, nothing came out. At the Joint Office right now do play a role. I wonder, have those who move the most demands have ever been troubled by the water sewage or ever received the public complaints as such? If not, I saw that they would not ask to reduce the office expenditure of this office. And actually, by reducing this budget doesn't mean the problem go away. And so the Joint Office have not been a good job. They've been due to three reasons. And this Joint Office is by the AVHD and the Buildings Department. And after years, they have been a shirking responsibility. Because there's no accountable management to. And a lot of the members simply complained that they waited a long time for the Joint Office to investigate and claimed that the technology applied is very outdated. The audit which claimed that seventeen, four hundred cases, about thirty thousand cases per year, a seventy percent increase. While the performance pledge declared that one hundred thirty-three days will be the time limit, but can it be achieved or attained? Most probably not. About half the cases cannot be reached. And most of them, I heard, wait two to eight years. So after eight years, this backlog is staggering.
Then it doesn't mean if we slash the budget of a department that we could resolve the matter. Rather, we have to review the work of the Joint Office at least. There should be more managerial staff so they could carry out law enforcement on water sewage cases. And also, they could upgrade their equipment and speed up investigation and so on. Now, another amendment that I oppose is number forty-three. Slashing fifty-three million dollars of the Food and Health Bureau. That's equivalent to the full year emolition, personal emolition of the food branch of staff. So here, we're talking about fifty-seven posts. For the food branch of the Food and Health Bureau is responsible for monitoring the market facilities, food safety, and also is responsible for dealing with environmental hygiene, black sports. It should, as you know, the mosquito and rodent problems becoming serious and then the rainy season is around the corner. So the public are worried about some dengue fever, you know, spread by mosquitoes. So they wanted the department to deal with the black sports. And if you cut the salary of the staff of this branch, who's going to do the work? That's why I'm against this amendment. I'm also against the proposal to cut the salary of the Secretary for Food and Health for one month. Now, she's here. Her portfolio covers many different aspects, food safety, healthcare, and so on. We've been talking about the five hospital projects. The Kwan Wai Hospital and other hospitals are waiting to be redeveloped and the public would like the projects to go ahead. It's the same for the Lady of Maryknoll Hospital and so on. We're all keen for the projects to be taken forward. And in the past two days, there have been some news reports. It takes nine years to wait for a joint replacement. And for a new orthopedic case, the wait is three and a half years. Now, the NTE has a serious problem, even in Kowloon, the wait is a hundred and six weeks or twenty-six months. So it takes two to three years to see a specialist at the outpatient clinic. So we need you to do the work. Who else going to do it otherwise? Now, because the economy is poor, so more people may choose to go to, well, for those who have the resources, they could go to their private doctors. But for those without the resources, they have to go for public healthcare services. So if there is not enough service, shouldn't you need to, shouldn't you increase manpower, facilities, and so on? So you have an important job, Secretary. I hope you can address our pressing issues. Now, I'd like to talk about the two amendments proposed by the Financial Secretary. The DB has proposed to increase the elderly healthcare voucher amount to three thousand dollars, but with one hundred billion dollars surplus, you would only give a one-off increase. So I would like to ask the Financial Secretary to reconsider. Please increase the amount of elderly healthcare voucher because it's so important for the elderly. And then during the second reading debate, I said, I asked the FS to pick up the pace. Don't wait till next February for people to apply. And then on Wednesday, the Financial Secretary said that this is a brand-new arrangement, so it takes time to set up the system. So in other words, he's going to give the money, but he can't speed up the process. No, but that's not good enough. FS, please, speed things up. I know, yes, you need to follow procedures, but please find ways to speed up the process so people could then apply for the four thousand dollars sooner. Now, we need to, you need to address the pressing needs of the public. So please do something to speed up that initiative. Thank you. Mister Jeremy Tam. Thank you, Mister Chairman. In the last round, I spoke on amendment number sixty-fifty-two, that is slashing the pay of the Secretary for Security. I'd like to say a few more things on government flying service. Now, actually, the pilots there have a dangerous job, imagine. We are talking about inclement weather, for instance, and there's a need to have a helicopter dropping off some officers to a ship for rescue. So it's dangerous. And then there's the engineering unit of the GFS, the engineers there have to repair helicopters and aeroplanes. So they need different kinds of certification so they could repair all such helicopters and planes. So I hope the Secretary for Security would seriously consider the necessary reforms and upgrading for the government flying service. Next, I want to talk about amendment forty-one, slashing the pay of the Secretary for Environment for a month. Well, we're not being too mean to him. We're not slashing his full year's pay. So it's just one month. So that means we don't think he's done everything wrong, but he's not done enough, definitely. I agree, we should cut his pay by a month. For example, the electric vehicle policy, we can see the failure there. A few years back, there is full waiver of first registration tax for electric vehicles, but now it's only ninety-five thousand dollars. At the same time, there's a new one-for-one replacement scheme. Now, I'm just not talking about electric vehicles or the purchase of electric vehicles. Yes, the Environment Bureau has to talk to the Financial Service and the Treasure Bureau, or rather, the Transport and Housing Bureau on the promotion of electric vehicles. But in implementing this policy, there are problems with, say, installation of charging facilities at car parks. There are already press reports on that. Now, if car parks could provide the charging facilities and they don't need to pay, they could be, there could be waiver of certain premiums. So there is need to provide electricity supply to electric vehicles. But then for the reference, electric car charging facilities, they don't need to be in place as long as the infrastructure is there. Mister Tam. You're talking about amendment number forty-one, Secretary for Environment, you know, cutting his, the pay of the Secretary for Environment for one month. But you're not talking about what the Secretary for Environment is doing. It's not his job. No, but the Environmental Protection Department is responsible for the written reply to the questions in the Special FC. So it should be the responsibility of the Secretary for Environment. I'm talking about this policy being implemented by the Environment Bureau. Yes, the Buildings Department may be responsible for implementing the policy, but the policy is launched by the Environment Bureau. So maybe the general public don't know that too. They don't know that the Secretary for Environment is responsible for all these aspects of the policy. And that's EMB, reply number EMB oh seven three. It says that those facilities, for those facilities, there's no need to provide the charges as long as there's a plug, that's good enough. Or as long as the electric cable is there, then it's fine. So there's no need to provide the actual charging facilities. And then, even that's the case, the Environment Bureau gave us a policy support and developers don't need to pay, get some premium waived. So the Secretary for Environment is responsible for formulating policy, but perhaps the Development Bureau is responsible for implementing policy. Perhaps the FS is also responsible. Because I think they have a steering committee to promote the use of electric vehicles and the chair of that steering committee is actually the FS. So therefore, the FS should review this arrangement. You shouldn't allow people to abuse that. And let's talk about the problem of electric vehicles. Now, for promoting electric vehicles, yes, the Transport and Housing Bureau plays a role too, but the lead thing role is played by the Environment Bureau. And what problems do we see here? The government has set two objectives for promoting electric vehicles by 2020. Hopefully, thirty percent of vehicles are either electric or hybrid. And that's a private car fleet. But then by January twenty eighteen, there are five hundred thousand private vehicles in Hong Kong, only ten thousand are electric vehicles. So it's less than two percent of the total. So we're looking far behind the target. I wonder how you're going to achieve the target by 2020? And in Hong Kong, there are just one thousand six hundred plus charging facilities, point three percent of all such, of all car parks. So again, this is a huge lag. And what's happening now? I wonder if it's because you don't have enough charges. That's why you drop the policy of full waiver of first registration tax and you put a cap at ninety-five thousand dollars. So you don't have enough charges, that's why you don't want so many vehicles in the market, and then it won't show up the problem. But some may say, this is the market, you know, you can't control who buy private vehicles. And look, let's look at the government's car fleet. Now, again, the reply is given by the Secretary for Environment at the Special FC meetings. We asked why there aren't more car parks with charging facilities? And the reply is that the driving range of electric vehicles is at least a hundred fifty kilometers. In Hong Kong, generally, the driving range only about several tens, dozens of kilometers for private vehicles. So one charge is enough for a car to last for a day at least. So there's no need for too many charges. So in other words, the driving range is enough, there's no need to provide so many charges as long as people can charge at home. But, again, it's the Secretary for Environment who gave reply at the Special FC meeting. We asked in the government's vehicle fleet, how many electric vehicles there are? The answer is two hundred fifty-six. It's pathetic. And we asked why it's so pathetic? And the reply is that electric vehicles amount for small proportion of the government vehicle fleet because of the battery capacity is not good enough and the driving range is relatively short. So it's the same secretary giving reply to two different questions. In one case, it said that electric vehicles have adequate driving range, so there's no need to provide so many charges. But then, when we asked why that there are so few electric government cars, and we're told because electric vehicles don't have good driving range. So that's a secretary that gave reply like that to our questions in writing. So I think it's only fair to dock his wage for a month. And then we, now there is the one-for-one replacement scheme. And then you say that you can get a waiver of two hundred fifty thousand dollars in first registration tax. But the assessment is wrong to start with, about how many cars might come forward for the replacement.
So you're assuming that some three hundred thousand vehicles will be coming forward, but then is it the case? Because when you sell a car, basically, you have the ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars, that's basic. And then when you try this one-on-one scheme, well, you're talking about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you will have to deduct that by ninety-seven thousand five hundred. So you can only make an extra of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay? So if the car age is over six years, okay? So if your car is more than six years old, so you'll be spending about three hundred to four hundred thousand dollars when you buy it. So by the time when you sell it, it's still worth of about a hundred thousand dollars. And assuming that I have to scrub it. So why do I have to scrub a car which is still worth about a hundred thousand dollars in exchange for just a hundred fifty thousand dollars? So for a six-year-old car, it's still very new. So how come you're turning it into waste? So the Environment Bureau, the Environment Bureau should have protected or conserved resources. But then, when you're driving a car, by the time when its value is already very low, let's say, if it's more than ten years old, when I sell it, it's only worth about ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars. Then, of course, I would naturally be prepared to scrub it in order to make the extra hundred fifty thousand dollars in terms of tax rebate. So the wrong assessment is that how many vehicles will be eligible? So that's the face value, because after six years, it might still worth three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. There are still many cars out there that are very worthy. And therefore, how many people would be prepared to do it? So when you draw the line at six years, it's not reasonable. Second, there is an additional requirement, that is, you have to own the car for at least three years. To own a car for three years, well, I can understand that behind this, you don't want people to just buy the car and then try to take advantage of the tax rebate by selling it. But then, as the Secretary for the Environment, you will have to bear this in mind, that is, so long as I lose one car, well, the older the better. And if I can replace it with an electric car, well, that's what he's thinking. But then, without increasing the number of cars on the road, so that's why you have put in place this one-on-one replacement. So why bother about the age? The older the better? And then if you scrub it, and then you can replace it with an electric car? So there is no need to put in place this requirement that he has to at least own this car for three years? But then for me, if I want to buy a car now in order to scrub it and replace it, it would already be too late because by the time when I own it for three years, this policy or this initiative might have expired. So all of a sudden, I may have to pay the extra ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Why? That's because the Environment Bureau has got it wrong in the sense that the reason why you have to talk to the TD about this beforehand, well, within the twenty-four month period, well, for twenty months, you will have to pay for the license for that car. That's a problem. Why? Because if you think that, well, people would be allowed, well, if they forget it, they would just forget about paying the license fee. So you don't need to give them a grace period of twenty, twenty-four months, because for four months, they can afford not to have the license for their cars. But then, what I'm against is that they will have to do that continuously. Why is it a problem? Because for older cars, well, Mister President, if the value is not high, then actually, there is no need for that to be registered, there is no need for them to mortgage their car to banks in order to repay the installment, the installment. So there is no question of the banks are reminding you that you will have to get a license because your car is up for renewal. So sometimes you would forget to pay the license fee. So if I forget it for a few weeks, and if I forget about it, then I'll just renew the license. So it's not that the person concerned is deliberately doing that because it's not his car or that he's just taking advantage of the tax rebate. Well, he genuinely might have forgotten. So within a twenty-four month period, it doesn't have to be continuous. But then, if you paid the license fee for at least twenty months or even up to twenty-three months, it's okay. But that does not have to be continuous because there is a chance or a risk that sometimes people might forget to pay for the renewal fee for a couple of months. And as a result of that, he might no longer be eligible. And therefore, in the course of implementation, there are a lot of blind spots, that's why. I support that for the Secretary for the Environment, he should have a month's pay deducted. Thank you. Mister James To. Chairman, when I spoke last time, I was speaking on item thirty-seven. It's about header one-two-two, it's about the police force. And also subheading one-oh-three, it's about remuneration for special services provided by the police force. I'm talking about subhead zero-zero-zero. So that's item thirty-five. So that's to cut eight hundred and fifty-nine million dollars, equivalent to the whole year's expenses for CAPO. Well, it's been more than twenty years since I started to fight for CAPO being made independent from the police force. In fact, that's very simple. It's like the ICAC. Well, it used to be an anti-corruption unit under the police force. And of course, once it's made independent, well, the ICAC has been independent for several decades and is for all to see that in our community, we do have an independent body outside of the police that can investigate into corruption cases involving the police. Similarly, for any complaints against police abuse of power, if we can have an independent complaint investigation mechanism, then we'll be able to convince the public that they should have trust in this mechanism for the police to investigate their own people. This image cannot be done away with. Because the administration has been saying that, well, in some jurisdictions, the police would also have police officers investigating their own people. Well, all I can say is that in different jurisdictions, their police force would indeed be so large that, for example, in the UK, well, for example, for Scotland Yard, the Metropolitan Police, well, another police force in Scotland or in Wales, in terms of the control and also supervision and so on, the mechanism might be entirely different. And therefore, for people who are familiar with the operation of the police force, to investigate the police force, and yet they belong to different setups, that would be effective because they are familiar with the setup and operation of the police force and therefore is okay for them to investigate the police force, so long as they belong to different units. But then for the Hong, for the Hong Kong Police Force, well, for CAPO officers, they are not going to be there permanently. So in accordance with their own experience, they would be promoted and also their specialties and skills would also be looked at. And as a result of that, there would be deployment of officers from different units to CAPO. And after a while, after serving for a certain term, they would also be redeployed to other units and they might even go back to the headquarters to serve for the rest of their career. And therefore, there would be cross-deployment. So there is no question of one officer serving in CAPO for his entire career. There will not be a situation whereby the team would be working there for the entire length of their career. Well, on the other hand, if CAPO does have a handful of teams or if there is an organization set up or mechanism available so that officers serving there would only be serving there without the chance of being redeployed to other units, then you would be able to at least reduce the suspicion that they would be investigating their own people because they would never be redeployed to other units in the course of their career. The problem of this redeployment is that after, we are talking about the same police force, and there is a chance that they would cross each other's path sometime in their career. And for police force, of course, there are a lot of dangers. And very often, they would work in teams and therefore mutual trust or even mutual attachment and support, whether it's psychological or in terms of their professional dedication and sense of mission and so on. They have to have mutual trust on one another. And if there is no mutual trust, they simply cannot work together. And if there is cross redeployment, all right, sometimes you're talking about your supervisors, superiors or subordinates and so on, then members of the public inevitably would be skeptical about their independence. And you can also say that for these police officers, they're against allowing CAPO to become independent. Because if we had a situation whereby people not from the police force were to investigate police officers, they do not understand the work of the police. And because of this misunderstanding, there might be misjudgment. For example, they might say that they have done it wrong or they might have abused their powers and so on. Well, the only thing that I can say is that if police officers think that, well, they would only be rest assured if they can have their own people investigating them, then inevitably, for people in the public, in particular, those who file complaints against police officers for abuse of powers, well, in serious cases, then how can the public have trust in the police when you have police officers investigating their own people? And also, for the complainants against the police, very often, they are also being charged in criminal cases. For example, if a suspect has been arrested and then the suspect would complain against the team of officers and he might have said that he has been abused by the police officers in detention. So in that case, if you So in that case, if you do not have um a team of people who are seen to be totally independent to in investigating such a case whereby the suspect might have claimed that he has been uh tortured and made to make a confession, then how can you win public confidence? For example, in a case where the uh claimant says that uh he has been tortured and he has been made to confess, then the defendant lawyer can also use this as some uh a ground for his defense, and then the court would be able to judge uh fairly. But then, let's not forget that uh that would take months when the trial takes place. And then the court might uh come to this conclusion that is um the evidence uh is not admissible because uh they might have been um tortured. Or the court might say that uh, well, there needs to be a uh re-investigation into the case to see if the suspect has been tortured. But then, the problem with this is that, number one, there is a chance that the court might not um be interested in investigating into the case. Uh it's just interested in looking at whether or not the evidence is uh admissible. And also, in the end, if the judge decides that uh there should be a re-investigation, for example, the Secretary for uh Justice or the Commissioner for Police might be asked to do another investigation. By then, the evidence might have been lost. And for the original case, for example, I gave you the example just now. And um there might have been the same group of complainants, and uh they might themselves have been involved in certain cases, and they are being investigated. But then because of the police problem, um Capo would often tell the complainants, that is, the complainants against uh police abuse of power, well, they might be told that uh because of this case, you will have to think about your own legal rights. Should you give evidence uh to Capo in order to investigate into the case? Because if that's the case, then Capo would have to pass this on to the uh team responsible for investigating into the criminal case that you're involved. In other words, your evidence or your statement will immediately be passed on to the team of officers that you're complaining against. That being the case, this is a legal dilemma. The Defense Council representing the complainant might say that, well, I'm not going to give evidence uh to Capo. And Capo, because of this uh lack of a statement, would not be able to start the investigation.
So this dilemma had yet to be resolved. And this unfair to the complainant as well. Just imagine there's a police force investigating a suspect, and the suspect uh was of the view that um he was arrested due to police corruption. And he then go to the ICAC, and then the ICAC will not wait for for the court and so on. And right away, if you think there's a prima facie case, it will start investigating. Why? Because the ICAC is independent of the police. And you also be of of confident that given the statement, why? You suspect there's corruption taking place, and you let the ICAC to investigate. At the same time, the ICAC were investigating whether this is where the police will investigate the suspect of a criminal case. So both investigation can be in parallel. But because the Capo is part of the police force, but a lot of the cases have been stuck in limbo and unable to be investigated, which is unfair to the complainant. At the same time, another problem was there's an IPCC above the Capo. Would that be the solution to the confidence issue? Of course, I never suspect the chairman, vice-chairman of IPCC would do their best under the existing mechanism to gather with the staff that's attempt to ask questions or um observe some complaints and investigates. But um whether these complaints are substantiated, um a few years ago, there's a former uh IPCC chairman, Mr. Ronnie Wong. So he was, he served as chairman of IPCC for six years. So that was his conclusion, that he think the IPCC is trying to achieve an impossible feat. So of all these cases handled by Capo, um they have seemed to hit a wall in trying to uh screen out the cases of suspected abusing power. So that is something said by the IPCC chairman. Such s- um conclusion is a very serious accusation. Of course, as a um need to consider the context as well. So in other words, um the IPCC have to wrestle with the Capo whether the ca- complaints are substantiated or not and or in um find out uh what gone wrong in those cases. So he pointed out that the IPCC had a structural defect, which I described as a three-nil organization first. No matter um uh whether the Capo did a good job or not, you're not able to have your own team, to hire your own team to investigate independently. In other words, you don't have to write to a second investigation. Let's say for most cases, after a reading report, you think the Capo did a reasonable job. However, some cases, when you suspect injustice, you cannot uh re-investigate. And on this, and second, it cannot um establish a case. You cannot decide whether the case substantiated or not. So at the end, if the Capo claim and substantiate, you can and argue with him, and you write to the Chief Executive, which I can and let the Chief Executive to decide. And thirdly, there's no right of uh penalty. So, under this mechanism and monitoring um monitoring the police on behalf of the public, they have the three structural defect. How can the public believe that the existing mechanism is effective? And in the if there's not a trustworthy mechanism, this amount has a part of misspent. Therefore, even though I know we've been hitting a wall, the three is slashing this um expenditure to um trying to break through next Mr. Alockin. It's not not here, so Mr. Ray Chan.
This time I will speak on Amendment nineteen. And it um uh uh had sixty, subhead zero-zero-zero, and reducing um two-hundred-sixty-nine-point-six million dollars, which is the equivalent estimated budget for the highest department to for the maintenance of the HCMB Bridge Hong Kong section. And one drafting question for the uh uh the budget, I think the maintenance cost for highest department increased by four-hundred-million. So which make me curious, why have such a substantial increase? Looking at this financial year, do you um for twenty-eighteen-nineteen, this only HCMB is expected to be commissioned. So my question was for the additional four-hundred-million, what kind of, which roads was involved? And for the extra expenditure incurred have included the HCMB bridge, which had yet to be commissioned. Uh who uh what's what's surprising is that the maintenance cost about um two-hundred-sixty-nine-point-six million, which uh made up the bulk of the increase of the maintenance expenditure. Of all this uh maintenance expenditure, the Hong Kong section per year will be as high as one-hundred-forty-three-point-nine million dollars. About um and Hong Kong section, about uh fifty million, which is um the uh zero-point-three percent of the uh uh B- board BCP. And I put it under Facebook, and the netizens have claimed outrageous and sent a lot of angry faces. And the um press media have asked such questions that for a HCMB bridge that had to be commissioned, its maintenance cost reached as high as two-hundred-seventy-million dollars. So let's have analogy, let's say you buy a building with furnishings, they hand over the keys to you, and then before you even move in there and claim that the maintenance would cost over uh one million, there's only two possibilities. Then one, that you're not being doing good job in inspecting in your flats. So um when you receive the keys, you have to begin the maintenance right away. Or there have been, I mean, shorty workmanship that require you to un- take maintenance right afterwards. However, the HCMB bridge have yet to be um turned over to us. But why was such a substantial maintenance cost incurred? So a a lot of questions will come that um before we commission their a lot of maintenance. So how do they arrive at this amount? So um the maintenance costs should only come after uh the the finishing, the construction. So in especially FC, I've asked the highest department on this question. I think um this main uh the maintenance budget has been ambiguous. So I think as unrecently high, the government explanation lacks clarity. And the bridge have yet to be commissioned, and well, uh there's no actual date. It just estimated that it will be commissioned by end of Sep- September or October. So it's only, so let's say it's only half year to the the March for the first next year. And yes, the maintenance is about two-hundred-sixty-nine-point-six million dollars, which is baffling. The most and the for the Hong Kong Link Road, while the maintenance fee is about a hundred-fifty-million dollars, since the Hong Kong Link Road had yet to be commissioned with no commission day wide, we have this uh maintenance cost. I've asked the administration and twice, and the replied was that um the Hong Kong Link Road incurred a higher maintenance cost because um uh the uh viaduct uh structure has unprecedented. There's about one-hundred-fifty-eight meters long, and the Hong Kong Link Road have over a hundred-fifty um sc- pillars and and uh fifty meters above the sea level. And the maintenance cost will uh cover uh the inspection and the cleaning and the uh um regular maintenance at sea and road, as well as the uh regular uh surveillance of the uh structure, as well um the uh electricity cost of the um maintenance building, since the cost will be higher than usual structure. So you still, the the reply is is still baffling because we have yet to be commissioned. So it's still at inspection stage. So now that um you have rec- have uh received that you still have the inspection, and every year, and first year is already a hundred-fifty-million. But then, well, the analogy, let's say you move in, so to speak. Or even in case of fire, as storms or natural disasters, we incur damage. So how much will the maintenance cost will be? So before we start using it, it will start spent a hundred-fifty-million. If there is some continuous wind tear, what will happen to these amounts? Uh what angry the and the highest department's response had and with um publicity, what I I asked about the high cost of maintenance, because um so the high operation cost of the uh border crossing. I think this uh response um is confusing. About a hundred-to-twenty million is for the BCP, about a hundred-fifty million is for the Hong Kong Link Road. And yet, the highest departments had uh described this uh maintenance cost for Link Road, it claimed as the cost for the BCP. When it's well reported of the ho- Director of Highways reply, to think that the you can't claim the Director had dishonest, I think intentionally misleading or to uh interpret the figure incorrectly. So I felt in a supplementary inquiry, and the highest department then laid out that the Link Road maintenance cost is equivalent to operation cost of the BCP. So even, so um this has been excluded. And yet, um the uh BCP operation cost was still described at the maintenance fees is unacceptable to the public. The public can accept the operation fees equivalent to the maintenance fees in in the contract. The maintenance and operations is separated. So for this one-hundred-twenty-million ma- BCP maintenance cost, shouldn't that included to in the operation cost to be questionable? The government having give the full answer at multiple occasions and confusing different concepts. And in the supplementary reply from the highest department, it described that the maintenance cost include our normal winds tear. And the that we understand, the highest department doesn't have the breakdown on this. So this answer came uh have uh let me let it suspect of this um great is to ensure there's a good use of public money, I'll promote this amendment. So it claimed only an um a an estimate, so we have no exact date of commissioning. For other delays, you know there's a lot of problem yet to be resolved. And they were not able to be commissioned within this year. So we're not able to s- able to spend this amount. It's just the Director of Highways have included un- undue the maintenance fee, even if I slash this part, so it can able to uh foot this bill through deployment. I just want to give him a lesson. Did ask him to explain clearly that this uh mega HCMB project, uh well, it also have astronomical maintenance costs. Another viewpoint which to raise, uh this maintenance cost, that part of them should be borne by Zuhai and Macau authorities. Because um HCMB is a Y-shaped bridge, and the and also a connecting through their respective link roads. Upon the completion of the Zuhai section, the Hong Kong vehicles will be diverted to the Hong, Macai and Macau Bridge Roads. And yes, their vehicles will actually be be so. And for the um Hong Kong's side, like Link Road traffic will be higher than the Macau and Zuhai Link Road. And the vehicles from both areas may have to use the Hong Kong Link Road. So, due to this, when the bridge is commissioned, that the Macau and Zuhai vehicles will uh pu- put uh create incur wind tear for the BCP and the Link Road. If there's no Hong Kong Link Road, the HCMB has no point, they wouldn't call HCMB in this sense. If uh for the Zuhai and the Macau side to to be a a share a portion of the maintenance cost, I think is perfectly reasonable. And um Hong Kong build this HCMB in response to um Macau's and Zuhai's demand. And uh we're using a very uh un- pitable contract with cost overruns up to billions of dollars. And the real quality will be ascertained after the commissioning. So maybe a year or two into commissioning, then we've the maintenance will start. By then, I believe that the costs will go up substantially.
So this is like a bottomless pit. We should ask for co-sharing of the maintenance fees, and it's only reasonable. That's why I have moved this amendment number ninety-nine, I ask members to support it. Next, amendment number twenty-nine. Um to reduce the budget under head ninety-two, subhead zero-zero to uh an amount of twelve-point-four-four-four-seven million dollars. Also proposed to cut um the head um ninety-two, subhead two-three-nine by five-hundred-and-thirty-eight million dollars. I think I can only cover one of these amendments. The twelve-point-four-four-four-seven million dollars cut in budget that includes the personal elements of Eva Jang, Secretary for Justice. That I'm being good here, I've combined um the salaries of several posts and put it together in one amendment. And apart from the um Secretary for Justice, there's also the Director of Public Prosecutions. And also the um the Constitution Development Section and the Election Section uh will also see a cut now. Maybe it's not ideal because you might uh agree to um docking the salary of Secretary for Justice more than the others and vice versa. But of first of all, why do you think we want to uh dock the salary of um Secretary for Justice, Eva Chang? I think we've been all too um tolerant of Eva Chang. It seems that the constitution crisis has been addressed. Now, someone who wrote a book on construction law and practice in Hong Kong, um building law expert uh who who has, who is both a qualified barrister and a qualified civil engineer. And she could actually claim that she did not note um illegal building structures in her own house. Now that's ridiculous. And this person who suspected of breach of law remains the Secretary for Justice. And she can use her power to um direct electoral officers to disqualify candidates for elections. And as she only came to two or three meetings of the Bills Committee on the colocation bill and then she left it to the le- legal uh to 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 the Solicitor General. Perhaps as a as better because the Solicitor General actually answered questions better than Eva Chang. So that's another reason to support my proposal to dock her salary. Now, um for this Secretary for Justice, who has set a bad example and who is not competent. Uh I think the pro-establishment camp should support my amendment to cut her salary for a year. Some may say she may have made a mistake, but so she doesn't, doesn't mean she needs to resign. In the case, cutting her salary for a mo- year is just um a a fit punishment. Now, I don't have time to repeat the whole story. But I hope the government will announce as soon as possible the progress of investigation into her illegal building structures because she's still the Secretary for Justice. So is there not enough evidence to prosecute? If you have made a decision, please tell the public as soon as possible because here we're talking about public interest. Now, the Secretary for Justice claims she is not involved in this uh in the prosecute, in any decision to prosecute on her illegal structures. The Building Department and the relevant um officers in the Department of Justice please submit the progress report as soon as possible to lay our concerns. Actually, she should have stepped down. Uh it should be more than just a docking her wage for a year. So please um support my amendment. If I may remind members, uh I need to allow sufficient time for officials and the fifteen movers of amendments to speak. So I will invite them to speak at around six thirty P M. And so this um the uh the second session debate should end at around eleven thirty A M tomorrow. After that, the committees will vote on each of the amendments and we'll proceed and after that, we'll proceed to the third session. For members who wish to speak, especially those who have not spoken, please press the in, request to speak button as soon as possible. Mr. Gary Che Fan. Members, I would like to speak on amendment number fifty seven. This, which is moved by Mr. Oh Na Heen to um slash the budget under head one five six um subhead seven hundred. That's um the equivalent to the full year budget for the pilot scheme on promoting interflows between sister schools in Hong Kong and the mainland. This uh pilot scheme on promoting the flows between sister schools in Hong Kong and the mainland started in the school year twenty fifteen to sixteen. The aim is to encourage more Hong Kong schools and mainland schools to become sister schools, supposedly. It's to last three years, but in the budget this year. There's a proposal to make this a standing scheme. In other words, every year, there will be additional expenditure of one hundred and seventy million dollars. Now, the new Democrats question whether such increase in funds in promoting exchanges between Hong Kong and mainland are put to good use. And that's why I support this amendment moved by Mr. Oh Outna- uh Oh Na Heen. Originally, I've also got an amendment, but because the criteria are now tighter. So it uh we have to follow the principle of one um amendment per head. So um so that's why I ha- have, that's why my uh my amendment's been ruled out. But um the government is supporting various exchange schemes with the mainland. It's not just, it's more than just the question of this pilot scheme on promoting the flows between sister schools in Hong Kong and the mainland. Now, some uh have tried to uh fi- um do a survey on places for exchange programs in the past few years. And we see that there are more and more vacant places. Originally vacancy was ten percent, but now it's gone up to forty percent. The Education Bureau funds these um exchange tours in twenty thirteen, fifty six thousand places. In a short space of five years, there's an increase of ninety percent. But um in twenty seventeen to eighteen, there are one hundred and six thousand places. If we look at the number of participants. Then the i- it's not as um they've predicted. In five, the five-year period. There were fifty thousand students and it's only gone up slightly to sixty three thousand students in a five-year period. So we just need to look at the number of participants and the growth increase in the number of places. You see there is substantial increase in places, but there has not been a substantial increase in the number of participants. So I question why the Education Bureau must still pour in more resources. Uh this was supposed to be a three-year pilot scheme, and now you want to make it a standing scheme to um give substantial resources to these exchange programs. Some heads of secondary schools said in interviews that um it's difficult for schools to increase the number of students taking part in exchange programs because um there are various constraints for schools to arrange for um out-of-time visits for students. And when it comes to student exchanges, uh we're not just talking about students, many teachers have to be involved. So we ca- we can't add to the workload of teachers just because we need to fill the places in these exchange programs. And and Hong Kong, you know, teachers already have a heavy burden. Now, for such mainland exchange tours, there's much more additional work for teachers. They have to plan the visits and then they have to write reports. And during the visits, they have to look after the safety of their students. It's tough job, it's not at all easy. Some teachers uh are totally exhausted by such um exchange programs because it's on top of their already onerous teaching burden. At the end of last year. There was some uh funded exchange program uh tour of a school. And it was um reported that if parents don't agree the children to take part in the tour, they have to give written reasons. Otherwise, they will all be considered uh to have opted in to join the program. So this gives the impression that school, the school is actually forcing students to take part in this exchange, mainland exchange tours. And teachers forced to fill the quota. In the audit report um published in April this year. Now, the Home Affairs Bureau has arranged um various um youth exchange programs that that ca- the cost is close to one hundred billion dollars compared to five years ago. That's a four hundred increase. And for many, for some of these exchange groups, they just to make the number. For example, in fifteen twenty, there was a free-day Hunan exchange tour. There was just one, one participant. It was funded by public money, one participant only. But the Home Affairs Bureau still approved the um application. So that's a one participant accompanied by three to go on this exchange tour. And how much did it cost at the end? Five thousand five hundred thirty three dollars in uh in grants. And one thousand four hundred forty dollars was to support the the participant. For the rest, four thousand nine thirty three dollars as the administrative cost of that particular exchange tour. So should we be spending public money like this? And again, it leads us to wonder if a government-funded mainland exchange um tours are spending public money properly. As for organizers um conducting these tours, we have to wonder if they are the only one benefiting from such a program. Now, there's another um association to promote national education. For many years, it's worked with the liaison office and the um um various provincial offices to go on, you know, tours that visited the home of Mao Zedong and Jinggangshan and so on. So Hong Kong people, of course, would doubt that these are brainwashing tours. These are about um united front and they 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 serve no purposes. If these exchange tours are effective, how come in recent years, there's so many surveys showing that um young people in Hong Kong resent the mainland more than ever? Uh they, we we have thought uh in the past that if there are more exchanges, there's better understanding. Then that will benefit mainland-Hong Kong integration or or people will be, would get to know more about the mainland. And so we know better the culture of the mainland and so on. But no, the outcome is just the opposite. Why? That's not how we should spend government resources. Government's saying that we must bring in talents from the mainland, but uh in in education and in other institutions, we are preventing young people from uh from moving up the so- social ladder. So doesn't matter how many exchange tours we organize, that it's not going to make up for that. And shouldn't we be using public resources on training local students instead of spending the money on such a mainland exchange tours?
Well, every year. We only have eighteen percent of the students at the right age group being able to be admitted to subsidized tertiary institution places. And now, we have been asked that we should integrate into the Greater Bay Area. And we are wrong from the Greater Bay Area. And yet, we do not have enough places for U G C-funded places. Then how can we expect our younger people to be willing to join such um exchange tours? So new Democrats are of the view that for such exchange programs, it's a mismatch of resources. We should not have put the resources into those areas. That's why I support Mr. Oh Na Heem's proposal that with regard to the pilot scheme on promoting interflows between sister schools in Hong Kong and the mainland. The entire year's spending be slashed. I now would like to turn to another amendment involving the Education Bureau. That's um item fifty seven, again, is proposed by Oh Na Heem to cut her head one five six subhead uh zero 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 on the Curriculum Development Institute. So that's the whole year's budget for the C D I. Or in, what recently with regard to the wording in history textbooks, there has been this turmoil or dispute and different members have spoken on that with regard to the resumption of sovereignty by um China over Hong Kong. And um the public, all of a sudden, come to be aware of the fact that there has been black box operation with regard to textbooks revision and so on. And now textbook publishers have to make reference to this guideline. And also, the um textbook development office would also have to provide uh latest or updated guidelines in preparing the publication of such textbooks. And yet, such guidelines are never published. So that's uh revised by the internal task group. And the content would be kept confidential. People cannot but suspect that since the, well, twenty years since the handover and now all of a sudden in twenty eighteen, you have to revise the wording so that instead of resume- resuming uh the exercise, the resumption of sovereignty will have to be changed. So it's not like what the C E said earlier when she came to this council for a question and answer session. She was asked a very simple question, so what's her mother tongue? And she refused to answer the question. That's because the Education Bureau, well, this is a well-established practice that is uh in uh preparing our textbook with regard to the handover. The wording has to be changed to resumption of sovereignty or resumption of the exercise of sovereignty. So one cannot but suspect that uh with regard to a mother tongue and also our textbook. Is it that the assessment panel has undergone some fundamental changes? This suspicion um is justified, is not coming from nowhere. And also in promoting national education in the past, that has been viewed as brainwashing national education. So these criticisms or suspicions have not come overnight because there have been too many uh incidents causing the public to be worried about this. Well, in the past, on the website, once again, they say that, well, our Cantonese is not the official language of the Hong Kong S A R. And then afterwards, after questions have been asked in the media, they uh deleted such wordings and they changed the remarks. So as a result of that, there have been a lot of uh questions being asked in the public. And also for liberty, for liberal studies, well, it's um uh an essential subject. And now, you're trying to change the marking system so that instead of having seven grades, it would be simplified into just two grades. So instead of having seven uh grades, you have two, just a pass or not pass. And also, whether or not it should be a mandatory subject. In the past, the pro-establishment camp has been criticizing this subject. For example, Priscilla Lee and also, uh Priscilla, Priscilla Le and also Li Xinyin uh have been criticizing whether or not it should be made an elective subject. In fact, liberal studies uh involves uh different issues or current affairs in Hong Kong. And of course, that would also in- include democratization and so on. But then uh it's about uh uh training up students so that they can have critical independent thinking. But then they're trying to revise the subject so that you're trying to change the younger generation so that they would be less concerned about politics and also current affairs. That's why liberal studies has become the target of the pro-establishment camp. They are trying to target this subject. Well, after ten years of implementation, after ten years of teaching liberal studies, teachers are now better able to grasp how it should be taught. And it is like what Carrie Lam said, education should uh be left to deal with it on its own. And then teachers and students are at a loss as to how they should be dealing with that term. Well, before I speak, I'd like to uh supplement on what I said earlier because uh, well, uh even under the budget, the administration is doing this uh, well, caring and sharing program. Well, I was responding to what Mr. Lau Kong Wah, the Secretary for Home Affairs, said. All right, um before I even spoke, before I cited that example, he already responded to that. The question that I was asking is about the mainland exchange program. So uh that's what I'd like to clarify. So this is about the uh the incident in- involving Bei- Beijing. All right, I was talking about subhead fifty and I can see that Mr. Chen, the political assistant, is here. So I have to ask this question, how come R S A R government can do this kind of peculiar thing? And as a result, the link is selling the properties. So we are talking about the um financial services development. So we are talking about the Financial Services Development Commission, well, or Council. Well, Mr. Shiu Kafai, you're very concerned about this, and I understand that you're very knowledgeable in that area. That's why I'd also like to seek your views on this. Well, I'm concerned about the Financial Services Development Council. Yes, it's going to be developed. Well, if you look at the name of it, yes, it's going to come up with suggestions or recommendations as to how this sector should be developed. But then I remember, C Y Leung, when he talked about the setting up of this council, the purpose was that, well, he'd like to develop this sovereignty fund idea. So it's like the damasac in, damasac fund in Singapore, so they would be using the state funds for investment and so on. But then, let's first understand Hong Kong situation better. Well, well, for the exchange fund run by the Monetary Authority, that is already playing the role of a sovereignty fund. Whether or not it's going to be turned into an independent company, we don't know. We can only wait and see as to what is going to happen. Well, during this session, what I'd like to say, I'd like to mention, I'd like to talk on number sixty-six, is about Head 190. So I'd like to slash the fund, that's 2018 to 19. That's about the UGC and also the LGC and also the Quality Assurance Council. So that's the spending for these institutes. I'd like to revise the spending or the funding for these institutions. Well, as I've told many friends, I'm also working in the, in one of the tertiary institutions. In fact, last week, in responding to my question, Mrs. Carrie Lam said that she respected the autonomy of the tertiary institutions, and that's the reason why she refused to talk about part-time lecturer's plight in these institutions. In fact, with genuine autonomy enjoyed by the tertiary institutions, it's not just about institutions being free from interference from the authorities. We have to provide an environment whereby there would be the proper environment for genuine autonomy. That's the UGC's responsibility and also the administration's responsibility because universities should have been able to conduct studies and researches which will bring about improvement in our society, and they should also take the lead in facing up to the challenges that we are facing in our community instead of just looking at some very ambiguous internationalization issues. And they are also the premises where we can train up or nurture our talents, and therefore, students should be able to develop comprehensively in individual university, in individual faculties and schools. They should not be marginalized by the universities and become the side issues in universities. In fact, these are the expectations of the community or universities. And every university, every student and every parent would have expected that. And if they've been able to do what I said just now, then there should not have been this logic of unending competition. They should not be struggle, they should not be struggling for survival. But then, what we understand to be the logic of the UGC is running counter to the expectation of the community. They attach a lot of importance to researchers, and they attach very little importance to education or teaching. And as a result, university education has changed its nature. So what the UGC is advocating is blind and unending competition, and they're encouraging universities to compete for better ranking in international league tables, and they would attach importance to the ranking. And who was to be punished? That would be the students. Because if you look at the triennial funding arrangement, universities have not been able to have long-term planning. And even worse, there is also fierce competition amongst universities for those that are less competitive in the mainstream. They will be the underdogs, and they'll be victimized. Instead of having diversified pathways for students, they should be able to develop different skills. And yet, they are actually sitting on some subjects, and they would not be respecting the importance of certain subjects. And then for the mainstream disciplines, they have been enjoying more funding and support. So we are not able to diversify our disciplines, and as a result, some disciplines will find it difficult to survive. And because of this logic of competition, well, we also have this situation whereby everybody would be competing for resources and so on, and the university system is becoming more bureaucratic. We can see that many primary and secondary school teachers, because of the overloading of administrative work, they have no time for teaching. And that would also affect our education philosophy, and tertiary education has been affected. Well, very often, teachers and students would be translated into figures, and they would be looking at the profitability of universities in terms of efficiency and so on. And then for the other philosophies and rationales or ideals, they would be brushed aside. Recently, we have also seen universities that have dismissed teachers with twenty or even thirty years' experience just because of the so-called cost-effectiveness so that they would be able to hire lower-paid lecturers so that they would be the roaming lecturers or professors and so on. Well, universities do have money, and the UGC also has money, and our administration is also not lacking in cash or money. How come these universities are like very poor people, and they're struggling for survival, and everybody is now trying to struggle for more money? So that's because of the logic of blind competition, and they're competing for competition's sake. That is the poor situation that we are in when it comes to university education. You might not have any idea about the roaming lecturers. In fact, I have this black joke. Well, people often nickname me, well, Coach King, and I'm also one of them. I have to go to different universities, and because of the fragmentation in the research funding and so on, and as a result of that, they would be hiring part-time lecturers, and gradually, some full-time lecturers would also be dismissed, and they would have to become part-timers. In fact, I've once been offered this part-time contract. So instead of having one full-time lecturer, the job will be fragmented into three part-time jobs so that three part-time lecturers would be hired instead. So that's the situation in universities. And because of this, the work of lecturers would become very volatile. For example, for one school term, I might be teaching in this university, and then afterwards, I might have to go to another university because my contract is not renewed. And sometimes, they might have to be teaching at two or even three universities in order to make a living. Taking myself as an example, well, I was teaching at the Chinese U as well as the City U. But then, very often, I would not be able to tell my students whether or not they'd be able to see me again next term. So they might not be able to see me again next term. I might have to switch to another subject or discipline. In fact, I can also tell you this, because what I'm most interested in is politics in East Asia. Well, last term, I was able to teach that, but then this term, I have not been able to do so.
Sometimes, I can only have a table to meet my students. I don't even have my own room, or not even a room with a table. And so, this is what our tertiary institution are facing at the moment. Why are the institution and UGC also rich? And yet, when it comes to teaching, they look so impoverished. So the roaming instructors have showed a lot of the teaching work. So there are the lowest class being oppressed. So I don't want to go in details because this is the debate on the appropriations bill. I wouldn't talk about teaching quality. No matter how passionate we are in our teaching, we can imagine when a teacher have lacked a stable job security, and only a month before school commencement, they will be notified of what subject they will teach. And one time, I was asked to teach about critical thinking. So I only received the notice a week before the work begins. I was told, oh, can you just teach this for me as well? I'm not accusing the other schools and the teaching staff not trying to do better. However, we are having a very mobile and highly insecure tertiary teaching environment. When schools and the students are not able to talk to the lecturers easily, the teaching quality be affected, and the poor environment will also impact the teaching quality. So that is the recent trend in tertiary education. The president, there's still a lot of young people with academic aspirations. They hope to contribute to the Hong Kong academia in this oppressive and competitive landscape and mechanism. A lot of them will only become the roaming instructors. So they only get the contract every six months, and struggling in the tertiary education circles. So this is the competition ranking and focus on research. And that is the policy set out by the UGC in wrestling for funding. It is a cruel system. So when discussing this amendment as to slashing the conference expenditure on the UGC, LGC, and QGC, President Peter mistaken that, and if you, there'll be no doubt we will just slash the budget. So all I want to say is about reinvention. If we don't move this amendment, how can we make our UGC system to, if they really have the commitment to ensure that the teaching quality of institutions that can face up to parents and the Hong Kong public, there's no, they shouldn't let this situation to continue. To improve the whole funding mechanism to allow the tertiary institution to focus back on teaching instead of marginalizing teaching, that is the UGC's responsibility. And President, the academic stress is, it's a shortage of university places. And a lot of the students have studied very hard just to enter the top eight universities. I do not agree that our pathway is to be so singular. However, that doesn't mean, in face of education fragmentation and flooding instructors and the focus on research, then the Hong Kong government does should bear some responsibility. So while I speak, the chief executive might be watching us. I believe that she had watched us. Otherwise, during the Q and A session, they would notice Mr. James Cho's statement. So they actually have, watching the speeches made by individual members. And on the CE's response, I have this to say. So we talk about institutional autonomy, it's not what she had in mind. Institution autonomy is important. However, in making an tertiary institution into a people-centric place instead of a cruel place and one of teaching policy instead of a distorted institution. Last week, the executive claimed that by funding for the self-founding institution so as to resolve the issues with the tertiary institutions. If the government keep ignoring these problems, this is not a demonstration of autonomy. This is the biggest irony to institution. If you continue to speak on, as we call the instructors out, what do I want to declare as to, I wish to move this amendment as well. Mr. Charles Mauch. Did I press the button or any other members like to speak? I wish to have a call.
I declare that I am adjunct professor for the United College of CHK as well as the adjunct professor for the City U, that's been stated in my declaration form.
Dr. K K Kwak. Thank you, President. I wish to speak on the nineteen amendment, amendment number nineteen, amendment nine twenty-nine, that's to slash the the emolument expenditure on the Department of Justice and the Director of Prosecutions as well as the the Legal Policy Division, Constitutional Development Unit and the Election Unit. I know that the Secretary of Justice have been quite popular, but not in how to defend the Hong Kong rule of law. That how to make our judiciary fair and open, that if he said she took the lead to destroy the rule of law, which is her illegal unauthorized building structures. And upon her appointment, that all her property, including in Chunmun and Forta Industrial Building, the property in Shatin and Repulse Bay have found to have unauthorized building works. So unauthorized buildings are not new on the high officials. And the previous chief executive, Si Wai Lung and Henry Tang, and even Donald Chung, or the a lot of the high officials have been embroiled of this illegal unauthorized building works. Unlike that, Mr. Theresa Chang is a registered engineer as well as the building, a major tribunal, appeals tribunal. She also authored textbooks on buildings law. For someone who is so familiar with the buildings laws and with engineering background and as a barrister, that she failed to lead by example. The biggest problem was how to that she led to further damaged our fragile rule of law since the assumption of twenty years ago. Of this twenty-one years, there's a lot of crisis in our rule of law, for example, the interpretations by the NBCSC and the Department of Justice, their position on some cases have let the public express great concern of the rule of law. If the new Secretary of Justice, Mr. Theresa Chang, have commit a unrectifiable mistake. And after the incident, she's tried to avoid giving account to the public. That's made me quite concerned.
Now, if someone is found with a building, illegal building structures is not that difficult to admit, correct and then apologize. But as political-appointed officials, she fails to do something that basic and that's a cause for concern. And that's actually the attitude of many government officials. They just try to first evade issue and then dodge the responsibilities and they also try not to apologize. But then, if she's just anybody and she's just senior counsel, I don't think many would care much about such problems. You know, for individuals who buy expensive properties, the more expensive properties, the higher chance of illegal structures or UBWs. We all know that, but I think the question is really to do with how she handled the case. Head twenty-one, subhead O O O. I've also moved an amendment to deduct the wage of the chief executive. Why? Because the chief executive tried to harbor her, so the secretary for justice did not own up to her problems and she's being harbored by her superior, that is Carrie Lam. Now, we all know Carrie Lam has dealt with illegal building structures before. When she was the secretary for development at the time, she had to deal with two unauthorized building works case. One was that of Henry Tang, the other of Si Wai Lung. But she dealt with the two differently. For the Henry Tang's case at the time, Carrie Lam, who was then secretary for development, dealt with it severely. Eventually, there was a prosecution. And the wife of Henry Tang was the one to shoulder the full liability. Well, it's a family matter, but anyway, she was fined one hundred and ten thousand dollars at the end for taking the blame. But then, when it came to handling of CY lungs, UBWs, she handled, Carrie Lam handled it differently. Now, for Eva Chang, again, Carrie Lam said something different. She said, oh, because she's too busy in public service, so she forgot about her own affair. So we should be accommodating. Let's say you or me have the blessings of the CE and say if we break a law and then the CE might say, well, because you're so busy as a legislator, so even if you break the law, it's fine. Now, what will happen to society then? Does it mean that all those busy in public duties or in public offices have all the reasons to commit a crime? Is that the case? You know, she's the chief executive, she has over three decades of experience in politics. And she portrayed herself as someone strong. So shouldn't she say that she cannot condone any officers, senior or junior, to break the law? And if there's a problem, the officers should own up as soon as possible and then make things right and apologize too. Well, then it may be a better way to do with it, but then she tried to just shelter the SJ time and again. And I don't endorse such an approach. Well, that's why I also mentioned the other amendment anyway. Let's come back to amendment number twenty-nine, the Director of Public Prosecutions. And the Constitutional Development Elections Unit of the Constitutional Affairs subdivision of the Legal Policy Division of the Department of Justice. So what do we see recently? A series of disqualification cases. Disqualification of incumbent legislators. And disqualification of the electoral by-election candidates. We and the public believe this is politically motivated. And these are politically motivated prosecutions. So they are not walking the talk under slogans of Hong Kong people administrating Hong Kong high degree of autonomy and one country, two systems. Now, the government has all the resources at its disposal. It has all the means at its disposal. And the government exhausted all means. They even got involved in judicial reviews. So these members lost their membership. Now, this is totally unacceptable. And then Agnes Chow tried to run for the electoral by-election in the Hong Kong Island constituency on behalf of the democristo, but she was disqualified. This is totally despicable, it's unacceptable. So the government has started a really bad precedent. And then the government could use any reasons to remove people not to their liking from elections. Now, we all know that elections aren't that fair after all. There's rigging of votes and there are various ways like organizing tours or offering gifts to voters. So candidates could secure votes. Or there's even special transportation on the election day and so on. So elections are already in a bad state here in Hong Kong. But what's worrying is that if the government thinks certain people may pose a threat to the government or might cause displeasure to the master, the Communist Party, then they may not even let these people take part in the elections. So for subhead O O O, head ninety-two, Mr. Ray Chan is proposing to slash the budget for this particular unit, Constitution Development and Elections Unit. Now, under the principle of one country, two systems side, the degree of autonomy and Hong Kong people administering Hong Kong, Hong Kong people have the right to vote in elections and to be elected into public offices. But now, under the DOJ, then they have now the means to remove their, the political opponents. And electoral offices have made a tool. At the time, the electoral officer of the Hong Kong Island was nowhere to be seen. Here we're talking about a middle-ranking civil servant. She did not have the guts, actually, all the capability to just disqualify any candidate. And questioning this council, it was said that the Secretary for Justice and the Department of Justice gave legal advice. So it's all too clear. That means in whole case of disqualifying members and candidates, the Secretary for Justice and individuals in the Department of Justice have been come tools to for political suppression. Now, for a long time, Hong Kong people have been taking, took pride in our election systems, especially because we're next to the mainland. You know, when we talk about the competitiveness of Hong Kong and so on, and various indexes, Hong Kong, we used to rank higher than the mainland. For example, freedom of speech, freedom of press, or freedom to stage protests or to strike. We have high, we had high rankings. And confidence in the judicial system also shows up the difference between Hong Kong and the mainland. But unfortunately, since the reunification twenty years ago, Hong Kong's rankings in these areas have been sliding down the scale. And that would damage Hong Kong. Now, as we want Hong Kong to be independent, to have independent status in leveraging on its competitiveness, the Secretary for Justice and reference officers in the Department of Justice are doing the exact opposite. They're trying to undermine our rule of law. They are the true culprits. Selective prosecutions, selective disqualifications. If all these become the norm, then there's no future for Hong Kong. Agnes Chow represents a generation, a new generation of young people. They have, they're clear views on the existing institution and they are the masters of the future. So they should leave Hong Kong's future to them and they are more than competent to manage our future. And unfortunately, under the current legal and judicial system and with the Secretary for Justice leading, there's no longer such a fairness in our system. That's why we shouldn't support these people through the budget. Thank you. Mr. Eddie Chu.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. In this session, I'd like to speak on two amendments. The first one by Mr. Ted Hui, amendment number fifty-six. That is to reduce the budget of the Education Bureau roughly equivalent to the full year budget for basic law education. Well, some members spoke on this subject before. But perhaps I have a different view on this matter. I'm not saying that the education bureaus spending of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars on basic law education is not good for young children. It's just that young children don't need you to spend three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to educate them on the basic law. Now, because this government, together with the Legislative Council, have been using real-life examples to teach people that, yes, we have this basic law, one hundred and fifty-nine articles altogether, but at the end, it could be summed up by this, that is, as long as the government is in power, there is no justice. In the past year, actually, one year is too long already. In the past year, there were four incidents that led me to believe that as soon as, as long as the students take a look at Facebook or the TV, they would have, you know, much experience with the basic law. Like amending the rules of procedure. Now, this is the committee stage of the Legislature Council. It should be part of the council meeting. The call should be thirty-five. But then the pro-establishment camp and the president, Mr. Andrew Lung, would all say in chorus that, no, the committee stage is not part of the council meeting, so a call of twenty would do. So that's a new interpretation of the basic law. That's what is said in letter, but it actually means something else. So as long as you have the power, you're able to do that.
So the same goes for the colocation bill. Well, the Bar Association says that under Article eighteen of the Basic Law, national laws cannot be implemented in Hong Kong. Well, what does our president do? So, Mr. Andrew Lung, in the face of it, can we proceed with second reading and also passage of that bill in this council? He's saying that for those who would like to challenge this law, they can go for judicial reviews. But then even a primary school student would know that if you try to file a judicial review, you lose the case. And even if you win, then you'll be facing another round of interpretation by the NPCSC. So they'll be imposing another new interpretation on you. And then in the end, they're going to win. So might is right. So it's no longer about what it says in text or in letter. Well, as Dr. Kwakaki said, well, the democristo in twenty sixteen, they were able to run. But then in twenty eighteen, they were no longer allowed to run. Well, it's the same basic law. So supposedly, the basic law is there to protect basic human rights. And yet, where there is, where might is right, in this administration, they can do it anytime they wish. And recently, Benny Tai also made some remarks in Taiwan. And of course, we also had this adjournment debate. Apparently, we should have that today, but then still, we haven't got time to debate that yet. So from that, you can see that, well, you can resolve that by this simple wording. That is, it's unconstitutional. So when you ask, why is it unconstitutional? Which article of the Basic Law has he broken? So you don't need to be bothered about it so long as they have, so long as they claim that you have violated the Basic Law, then everybody will be besieging you with criticism. So we have already got four examples. And we can just tell our kids that the Basic Law in simple And we can just tell our kids that the Basic Law in simple terms, yes, we have one hundred and fifty-nine articles, but then it all boils down to this, that is, might is right. When you have might, then you have every right to do whatever you want. And then for the rest, you don't have to do anything at all. You don't have to teach them anything. Now, the next that I'd like to turn to is about the AFCD. So Raymond Chen and Kwong Chuen Yu have respectively moved this amendment. So this is about slashing the AFCD's whole year estimates on catching stray animals and also the humanistic treatment of animals. So why have I chosen to speak on this at this juncture? Because the Undersecretary for Food and Health is still here. Well, at the Food and Environmental Hygiene Panel Meeting of this council, we were just discussing how we should be dealing with these animals that are found in different districts and so on. Well, they said that, starting from a few years ago, they have this catch-neuter trial program. And so that's the CNR program, so that's done in Changchau. So they've tried it out for several years. So this is the catch-nutering and return program. But then the administration thought that they hadn't been able to reach the target. What kind of target is that? So that's about the drop in figures in stray animals in a community. That's about the number of stray dogs. It did not drop as much as they had expected. And also, after they have caught the stray dogs for neutering. Well, yesterday, Madam Deputy, I was there, and the more I heard them elaborate, the more I got angry. So that's about the CNR program. But then, what or not is a good program? Well, it turns out that the administration had not reserved a sum for that purpose. So they just allow the animal welfare agencies and also the volunteers, they are using their spare time, and also their efforts. And they would also have to buy their own dogs' feed and also animal feed and so on. So they catch the stray dogs, and then they would also have to carry out the neutering and so on. Well, they're actually working around, they're actually working without taking a break throughout the years. And three years down the road, the administration just said that, well, sorry, you haven't been able to reach a target. But then the thing is fundamentally is wrong for the catch-nutering and return program. One of the most important principles is that you will have to ensure that the AFCD will be killing fewer dogs so that they would be doing less harm to the community, so that these community animals will be able to have a better life. And yet, in terms of that indicator, well, these are lacking. So they would never think about the pilot program in the sense that it has been able to reduce the number of dogs that you, that would be put down. All right, there's no indicator whatsoever. So you're just looking at the number of complaints and what or not you are having fewer stray dogs and so on. And also, you're not taking up the responsibility at all. You're passing the buck on to all the volunteers and welfare agencies and so on. So I don't know, for the animal volunteers and also the animal welfare agencies, well, is it that they owed you this? So for the targets, as you said it yourself, you said that you'd like to safeguard animals' welfare or well-being. But then, if you look at this sum of money, well, when the allocation is made, when you look at the target is to catch a certain number of stray animals and also the number of animals to be put down. So that's made very clearly in the estimates. So what they need in terms of funding is that, well, they don't want this to be done any further. But then if you look at it in the proper direction, they are not going to approve funding for that. That's the reason why I support Mr. Raymond Chen and also Mr. Kwong Chuen Yu's proposal to move this amendment. That is, we have to slash your funding so that you'll not be able to catch these dogs and put down these dogs. And if you don't have the money, when you lack the money, it's not about thinking about what you should have done. You should have thought about who is being nice to you. And if they are being nice to you, well, these are the animal welfare agencies and also the group of volunteers. They've been working very hard to serve the stray animals. If I look at the figures, in twenty oh eight, you put down ten thousand two hundred forty stray dogs, and then by twenty seventeen, you put down one thousand seven hundred and forty-eight stray dogs. Indeed, the number has come down very drastically. But then it's not that you have done a good job. Well, what you said was, yes, we have put in place a number of initiatives. That's why we are putting down fewer dogs. Sorry, that's not true. If you look at your own budget, your budget is not put in the area where you can catch fewer stray dogs and put down fewer animals. In fact, the atmosphere in our community has changed. There are many more people who are willing to spare their time and effort so that gradually, you cannot but catch fewer dogs and put down fewer dogs. So please do acknowledge this. Please do give the credit to the welfare agencies and also the volunteers who have worked so hard. And Madam Deputy, the reason why we have to cut this budget right away this year so that they will no longer be able to catch these stray dogs and put down these stray dogs because, well, imminently, in the new territory, starting from Wongchau and then ENT and also Hongshui Kiu and then Kim and so on, there'll be large-scale operations and developments in these rural areas. And with development taking place, they simply do not have the policy in place. I've asked this, I put this to the Bureau Director, Ms. Chen. So I asked her, if you have counted the number of stray dogs and stray cats? And she said, no, they had never done it. All right, you've cleared off the inhabitants, all right? They have been allocated public housing. What happens to the stray dogs and what happens to the dogs and cats? Well, she said that I'm sure the owners would be very conscientious, and they would not be abandoning their pet animals and so on. I don't think that would be the case. I think you cannot be more attached from the reality. You're doing this, and you're displacing these animals. And so what choice do they have? Either they stay in subdivided flats or they go to public housing. So you can imagine, very imminently, we are going to have a large number of stray pet animals, and they are being abandoned by their owners. And then you're asking for this funding so that you can catch stray dogs and animals, so that you can put down these animals. So what is the result going to be like? So you'll be just doing the same thing. So you'll be, you'll be clearing the buildings and also the villages and so on, and there is no money for these animals, and their welfare will not be safeguarded. And at the same time, you will have to put down more dogs and cats and more animals because that's the arrangement in terms of funding. So even for bureaucrats, you have no alternative but to do this. That's why this year is indeed a critical year. Well, many projects will be implemented or will commence shortly. For those who are very concerned about animal welfare, we are using this amendment so that we'll take away this thirty million dollars. So I'm not saying that they should not have any funding in the future, all right? If they change the policy and if we need this for TNR or CNR so that we can face up to this problem of animals, then they will have to come up with a way so that they can get funding again from the AFC. I'll be in favor of it. But then we will have to slash these two funding subheads because if you don't do that, then they will press ahead with that. And in the face of such disasters, nothing can be done about it. So I really hope that members will consider this seriously. So we'll vote on this tomorrow. I hope that you'll support the proposal by Mr. Raymond Chen and Kwong Chuen Yu on these two proposals. Does any other member wish to speak? Elizabeth Quod.
My apologies, Madam Deputy. Thank you, Madam Deputy. I'd like to speak on some amendments. For example, number six, seven, eight is about the Correctional Services Department. I'd like to speak on it. Well, I can see that, well, item six is the slashing of the whole year's remuneration for the Commissioner for Correctional Services. And seven is about the replacement and updating of the CCTV system for pick-up prison. And on item eight is about the replacement of the audio communication system at the visit room. Well, I don't want these to be cut. First, let me turn to the CCTV system. Well, for pick-up prison, the estimates for the pick-up prisons CCTV system, that's because they'd like to install a new system so that for the CCTV system, they'd like to have it digitized so that there would be higher resolution, and they'd also be able to store images, and that would also help upgrade the system, and that would also help improve energy efficiency because it's more energy efficient. In fact, in recent months, we have visited different prisons, and different members also agree that all prisons should update and upgrade their CCTV systems as soon as possible so that the quality of monitoring can be enhanced. It's not just to help where incidents happen so that staff would be able to respond more promptly. And also, that would also be more effective in protecting and safeguarding the rights of the inmates because once an incident takes place, the CCTV records would also be very strong evidence. That's why we should not be slashing these funding. In fact, we've also put it to the CSD, how come they are not doing this in one go? So that that could be done comprehensively. But then according to them, that cannot be done overnight. And therefore, they do have a phase program in order to upgrade the systems one by one. So after the systems have been replaced and upgraded, we would not have any blind spots in the prison so for the staff and also the inmates, there would be better protection.
And if you are to reduce the expenditure on the communication system, then this is puzzling because the system they have is outdated. And they want this particular head will also cover the replacement of the PA system. But if this cannot be updated, then the law and order in the institution may not be able, may not be maintained properly. So these are not totally unnecessary cuts. And let me now turn to the proposed amendments to dock the full pay, full year's pay of the Commissioner of Correctional Services. Because recently, there have been some accusations leveled against the CSD. Dr. Chen Chong Tai said some CSD officer beat up certain people, but actually, they were trying to save those people. And it's also said that the CSD officers were in police to inmates. Well, I receive complaints from officers, some officers, that they are very aggrieved by such comments and accusations. So we should support them. We should not cut the expenditure on replacement of equipment. And actually, the achievement of our CSD is well-recognized internationally, and they have a tough job to do. If you want every inmate to feel just at home, this is just simply not practicable because the inmate is there to be corrected, to be helped and punished. And very often, they would, the routine there is to help inmates to establish some discipline. And we have a very good law and order situation precisely because these officers are helping everyone they can to the best of their ability. But if you just want to uphold the rights of inmates and level accusations against them, this will affect their morale, and this would ever affect our law and order situation. Actually, we have to be mindful of the work they have to take up. They have the highest wastage rate among the discipline services. And they are also having a lot of officers retiring soon. And then new officers can only take over after the incumbent officers have retired. But there's a, the need to train the new officers, so there will be a window. And during the window period, other officers will have to share the workload. So there's a tight manpower situation, and workload is heavy. And this is going to be, going to be more and more serious with more and more officers retiring. So I hope the government would change its system because you sort of, you should know that certain officers are due for retirement sometime. So you should start recruitment earlier. And in the civil service, many people, many officers work on a five-day week, but only one thousand and hundred out of the seven thousand, or sixteen percent of them have this five-day work system. And also, the time offered is not very fair. They work very long hours, and they have to patrol all the time inside correctional institutions. And very often, they have to work seven hours in a stretch without any rest period. So perhaps some changes can be made to improve the working environment. And also, the locations of correctional institutions can be very remote. And then they may need to work overnight, and between shifts, they may not have time to go home. So they need some rest rooms for temporary accommodation. But the space is very small, and they have bunk bags. If you get onto the upper bunk, you would wake up the one lying on the lower bunk. So they are not, they are not given sufficient facilities. I've talked to three directors of bureau, and the problem still remain. Because if we want to give them more space, we need to involve the GPA. So we cannot just involve the Security Bureau or the Civil Service Bureau. We have to involve the FSTB so that the GPA can be involved to increase the restroom or increase the size of restroom. So I'm still working on this problem at the moment. They work in remote stations, but there's no transport provided to offices. And if during inclement weather such as a typhoon, the officers just don't know how they can get to their work location. So I hope members will not just be paying attention to inmates' rights for the sake of our law and order situation. We should also strive to get better terms for our offices in the CSD so that there will not be such a high wastage rate and they can have a happy work environment. These are people who always work behind the scenes and never adopt high profile. They are the unsung heroes of Hong Kong. I hope everyone will support the work of a CSD. Madam Deputy, among the amendments, for example, number twenty, moved by Mr. Ray Chan, proposing to proposing to the full year's salary of the Immigration Department for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. I don't know why Mr. Chen thinks that all officers working in the Immigration Department should get no pay. These officers are working very hard. They handle our day-to-day immigration, care and services diligently. And they have to deal with cases submitted by bogus refugees. They are, they are working very hard. So why do you want to cut their expenditure for the whole year? For the, for this area, for the whole year? This is a total disrespect of the department and it's unfair. Whatever the reasons for moving this amendment, this would certainly hurt frontline officers in the Immigration Department. And also Amendments Thirty-three, Thirty-four, Thirty-four, Thirty-five, Thirty-six, Thirty-seven and Thirty-eight. Proposing cuts of the full year's salary of the police. Mr. Chen, Chichin, proposed to cut the full year's expenditure on salary and remuneration. And there's another proposed amendment to cut the full year's expenditure on special-purpose vehicles run by the police. So what can we do? What would happen to Hong Kong? So we don't need to maintain security. So police officers should either work as unpaid volunteers or they should stop working in the police force. And Mr. Alokin also want to dock the pay of the Secretary for INT for the full year. On the one hand, you want to promote innovation and technology. On the other, you want to cut the expenditure on their pay. And also on Number Sixty-seven, it's about a proposal to cut the full year expenditure on the purchase of drinking water. So what should we do? Stop drinking water? We know there are people who hate China. So whatever is connected to the mainland, they would oppose to it. Since water comes from Dongjiang, that's why they want to cut this expenditure. But what is the substitute for Dongjiang water? If we do not buy Dongjiang water? I, I, I agree that water is a valuable resource and Hong Kong should recycle water. We should conserve water and reduce the reliance on Dongjiang River water. But that doesn't mean that we do not need Dongjiang River now or we can stop buying water now. The Guangdong government has given a promise to supply water to Hong Kong, notwithstanding the tight resource situation in Guangdong. So this proposed amendment to cut the full year's expenditure on purchasing water is really unrealistic. And also on sixty, apart from the two amendments, Sixty-two and Sixty-three, which I would support, I oppose to all other amendments. Mrs. Siu Ka Chen, thank you, Madam Deputy. I'm going to speak on a